Good evening. Today is Monday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are at the Green Ladel, and we'll call the meeting to order at five thirty-one P. M. with the pledge of allegiance. Agenda item number two, our school committee member introductions. We'll start with Councilor Harriman.
Scott Harriman, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Dominic O'Leant, Ward seven.
Megan Heard, Ward six.
Iman Osman, Ward five.
Craig Shopen here, Ward four.
Elizabeth Eames, Ward three.
Janet Bowden, Ward two.
Phoenix Mulholland, Ward one.
Megan Parks, at large.
Jake Legless, Superintendent.
Karen Parkhead, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is to receive an introduction for Lewiston Public Schools, Ward five, school committee member, Iman Osman.
So be brief, and I don't know if he wants to share or what to show him some of the ropes, like the the mic and whatnot, but Iman's been into the office a couple of times already, and he's done his, you know, paperwork and all of those kinds of things, and he's been a good conversation. We talked this morning briefly, but he's happy and excited to represent Ward five. And Iman, I don't know if you want to add anything, but if if you do, Craig's going to show you how to picture on the mic.
Hello, my name is Iman, and and I am filled with gratitude and excitement as I join this distinguished committee. And I have lived in Lewiston for more than ten years. I have a son who goes to Montalo, a nine-year-old son, and this has been my community forever, a decade. I came here as a teenager. I grew up here in Lewiston, and I went to school in Lewiston. And I'm proud to be in Lewiston, and this community holds a special place in my heart, and I look forward to work with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the committee.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like set aside? Seeing none, the consent agenda is adopted. Agenda item number five is public input. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on and on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Comments that pertain to staff, personnel matters, or a student issue should be directed to the superintendent or the appropriate staff member of Lewiston Public Schools. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief, not repetitive, and related to the matter at hand. Before starting, please state your name, address, and affiliation to Lewiston Public Schools. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Matthew Wegrin, Ward four. A new year, but we still have the same issues with youth violence here in Lewiston. But let's be fair, we're not alone in this. It starts with our younger kids, and as they get older, it escalates from fists to possibly carrying weapons and using them. The school needs to have a zero-tolerance policy when it comes to violence. We need to make our schools a safe zone for all the students, all the teachers, and all our staff. We need the same policy to apply to bullying. As nationwide, there's a trend that when the adults fail to deal with the issues of bullying, the children end up taking matters into their own hands, and it never ends well. But you are not in this battle alone against youth violence. As our police chief, Saint Pierre, said, we need to bring together the parents and guardians, the nonprofits who are working with these kids, our safety committee, the schools, law enforcement. And look, I'm no big fan of DHS, but they have assets they can use to help us here. We need their help as well. Because we need to bring violence in Lewiston back under control. I also ask all of you to look at laying out a two- and five-year plan for our school system. Trust me, with this year's budget coming up, it's not going to be an easy battle. The less we're surprised, the easier it will be for the budget to pass. Bill did a great layout for the next five years, a major maintenance and upgrades, so at least that's out there. We all know that Jake has this great plan for bringing all our, most of our kids back in the system from special needs programs. But what's, we know there's a cost savings, but there's also going to be cost increases. Teachers get added. Also, what's our forecast for students look like? Are we going to need more teachers? How much is that going to cost us? So we have some ideas. And finally, I know somebody out there has to be looking at when CDS lands on our plate. We've all heard the state of Maine will pay for it, but what if three, five years out, the state of Maine goes, uh, the communities can handle this minor expense? Or worse, does it allot enough money for what they need for services? Because this is the state of Maine. And last I knew, the state of Maine, well, in Lewiston, and this was ten years ago, there was over five hundred kids in CDS care. How are we going to pay for the staffing? How are we going to pay for the special projects people they need? That's all costs. It could end up on us. Looking long-term, this is one of the things that this committee needs to lay out to our legislative group to make sure the full cost of this is not offloaded on individual school systems and the local tax bases, but still shared by all the state. Because while there are some districts that might have five kids, they can absorb that. Could we absorb seven hundred and fifty kids, a thousand kids needing special needs care at age three, age four, age five? That will break our budget. You guys, we will never get a budget passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Alexander Belova. I work sixth grade over at Connors Elementary across the street. I just wanted to share some of my perspective in terms of what happened with the last set of budget cuts and just some things that I'm seeing over at the school. So first thing I want to say, I love working at Connors. It is a dream come true every day. I honestly see so much potential in our students, and it's really transformational work every single day. It is so much fun to come into work every day at Connors. I love it. It's you get to see what Lewiston has and what it could become when you come into those classrooms. You really see a lot of potential. I'm kind of talking to voters. I'm kind of talking to you guys. I'm just sharing my perspective on what I've seen. Our students can't speak for themselves, and they can't advocate for themselves, so I'm here to advocate for them. We lost some interventionist positions this past year around reading and mathematics, and now we have students who can't get the reading help they need. It's been shown through data and other studies that students who have reading gaps will show behavior gaps. I know not all of us can get on board with what's going on in the schools, but I think we can all get on board with what's happening around Lewiston and some of the behaviors we're seeing, definitely. That's something I've noticed. I've heard people talk about cutting instructional coaches. Those are vital. I was a really raw teacher when I came up here, who fell in love with the work, but instructional coaches helped me become the best version of myself, and it helped me really become a good teacher. We're doing a huge disservice to our population when we're not helping with reading. I could go on about math and social studies and histories and other things that's going on, but when our students can't read, we are seeing behavior spike. There's only so much an individual teacher can do, and losing out on some of these positions in the last rounds of budget cuts really hurt us. I can't really get into the weeds about all the numbers and stuff like that. I can only sit up here and advocate for my students because they can't come here and advocate for themselves. I hope that in this next round of budget cuts, anyone who's listening at home or anyone in this room realizes that everybody is doing their utmost to help so much. We have an opportunity to demonstrate that we value education, our students, and the long-term success of Lewiston, which is a beautiful vision. But I have to come here today and let you know we are failing some of our students when we cut some of these positions. I know you guys have a lot of work to do when that comes up, but to the voters and anyone else, don't let this community down because you can't get up and vote for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Not, we'll move on to agenda item number six to receive and potentially vote on the field trip request for the culinary students to travel to France. Chef Cher will present.
Becca and Tonya here.
Thank you. I'm Tony Sheer, and that's Chef Becca Levecq, and thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. As you know, we're going to Italy again this April, and we put in the permission slip, and we would like to go to France in two thousand and twenty-six. So we just wanted to to get that in front of you guys. There's chef will talk about it. There's financial benefits and our fundraising and the things that we do. The sooner we get started, the better we off, the better off we are, and the more financially prepared to go on a trip like this our our students would be. It just looks like an exciting trip. We're excited to go to Italy again, and Chef's going to share some of the details and happy to answer questions, too.
Yeah, hello. So some exciting things that we're looking at for two thousand and twenty-six in our trip to France. This does still highlight French cuisine culinary experiences for our students. Getting a little bit of an earlier start, since this would be our third time planning an overseas trip for our students. We've been learning along the way. We've been having such a great experience working with EF, EF Tours, and getting an earlier start this time around, planning for two thousand and twenty-six. There are some financial advantages for our students. Planning more advanced, the price is lower, and it gives them a lot more time for making payments, so breaking it down into smaller payments for them. So we're excited to get a jumpstart on this, so we would be presenting this trip to our current junior class planning for their senior year. We do offer fundraising opportunities. I know some of you have attended our fundraising dinners and other, you know, pop-up sales and stuff like that, which we greatly appreciate. But yeah, we're just trying to make this as doable as possible for our students, and getting an earlier start in the planning process benefits them.
We've really seen, too, with this, since we started doing this, the kids sometime, you know, we do our restaurant week, and it's their, it's their responsibility. It's part of their grade to come in and and do that on those days, but when we started doing this, even this year, we have so many kids that come in and help. So our, this is our senior class going this year to Italy, and we have juniors showing up out of the woodwork to help at these dinners that we're doing, just to help. It's amazing the way that they come in and they want to be here and help. It's really changed the way they work. I would say they would, they, they're, they're more willing to work to to do something that they see a benefit, not just that they're learning to to wait on people, or they're learning to cook, but they're, they're earning, they're learning. It's great. It's great for everybody.
Are you, are you ready for questions?
Yes, any.
Member Bowden.
Thank you. So what I'm wondering is, I know you went on the the trip last year. I wasn't here for that meeting when you guys got to eat all the food. I know. I watched from home, and I was so bummed out. Um, but I'm just wondering, were you able to fundraise enough to fully cover the cost for every student on the last trip that you took and the trip that you're taking this year? Does it, is it projecting, like, probably no cost to students for this?
So did last year, so the first, the first time we went, we got started real late. We didn't do a fundraiser until December. So the first year, last year, when we went, it was harder. Lots of kids, you know, different kids, different backgrounds, different financial situations. Some kids were great. They just showed up. My grandma's given me this for my graduation present or or what have you, and some kids had a a deeper need, and they came in and worked more, and some would come see us, and some we helped out, and some did all the fundraisers. And I'd say last year, we'd, they, we probably paid with the fundraising, everything we did, we probably paid for half of every student to go, which was great, and they were, they appreciated that, too. If they had overpaid, some kids that came in and worked, they got the money back in a timely manner from EF, who, again, we enjoy working with. They come to visit us, and actually, our tour guide that we went to Italy with, he came to visit us, too. So he was here this fall, and he'll be our tour guide again in Italy this year. But now with this year getting started earlier, we have an opportunity. We really put it on the students, our seniors, you know, you guys got to write the menu. You guys got to execute. If you don't execute, then people won't come next time if the food isn't good. So we really put it on them, and they really take the responsibility, and we tell them, too, you know, if you want to do extra things, like we sell pizzas on Wednesdays, so the kids that want to come in early and help us make pizzas for those days, the financial benefit goes to them, but I think we're probably on track to pay for more of the trip this year than we did last year with the fundraising that we did.
Wonderful. I just wanted to make sure that every student has the opportunity to go. That's a part of the program. And, you know, financial things aren't holding anybody back from attending this.
Totally, yeah.
It's a great opportunity.
We, we talk on an individual basis with some students, and some, some aren't interested in going at all, and some want to go, and financially, they come see us, you know, we never call anybody out. We wait for them to come to us, and they say, I really want to go, but I can't afford it, and then we try to do the best that we can to make sure that they get to go.
Thank you. Member Heard?
Thank you. I have two questions. One, is there a reason you decided to change it up and and go someplace different? Is it just you want to try something new or?
Well, we, again, we went to, so this is, we are second trip to Italy, and the first year, we just, we were opened it up to seniors. We were just taking seniors with us, and then we realized it was more of a benefit to take more people with us, so we did open up to our juniors. So if we have a junior going to Italy this year, we assume that they would rather want to go somewhere else. I mean, we'd be happy going back to Italy every year, but
Maybe we'll alternate. I don't know.
Yeah, but for their benefit, if you know, if we have a, we do have some people, we already have a junior that is going to Italy with us this year, and she already says she wants to go to Paris with us next year, so as a student, it's more beneficial for her to see another part of the world than go to the same one.
Okay, and then my other question was, on this itinerary, it says a three-day tour extension. Is that something you guys are doing automatically?
Yes, so the price that's given on the last page does include the three-day extension, so we can see more of southern France. So, and our Italy trip has also been a twelve-day trip for both of them, so same timeline in April vacation.
Member Galant?
Hi, this sounds just so exciting. What's your average amount of kids do you take with you each year?
So we took fourteen, thirteen students last year, and we tried to get to thirty this year, tried to get to thirty students, because with thirty students, we're on a a private tour bus when we get there, and that gives us more opportunity to change things on the schedule. We didn't quite get there. I think we're
We're twenty-one students.
Twenty-one students this year.
And also.
Yeah. Does that count?
Yeah, can I go? I also see the the buffet you're having later this month. Is that part of the fundraising, or is that something different?
Well, I don't think we have, we haven't advertised our fundraiser we're doing that. I think next week. Go ahead, Chef.
Sure, yeah. So if if you like, follow our social media on Facebook, we did just post our student-run restaurant days, so those are the daytime lunches. That's something we do as part of our curriculum. The, we do advertise also our, like, evening dinners. Usually, we try to say pretty clear that this is a fundraising event. Currently, they've been focused on our Italy trip, but if this trip moves forward, then we will be beginning fundraising opportunities for this trip as well. So so far, we've done evenings focused on the fundraising. That way, it really, it just pertains to the students that want to participate, and it's not part of the curriculum, the daytime curriculum, I guess.
Member Eames?
Hi, this is wonderful. I'm so happy this is happening. I do have a sort of a philosophical suggestion, which is those who, whose grandmother gives them the trip as graduation should still have to work.
Totally, yeah. We, we encourage them all, you know, like I said.
Encourage them all. You should require them all to work, because it's not fair that someone who who doesn't have the resources has to work where someone else doesn't. So I just was hoping that would be true.
Thank you. We appreciate that, and we couldn't agree more. I mean, we we, if I said we have a banquet that, you know, Lewiston soccer team's having a banquet on Saturday morning, who wants to volunteer? Or who wants to work? Because we'd pay them to do that. We'd have to walk around and beg kids to come, and, you know, maybe we'd get six, and we'd do the banquet, and we'd have no problem. It'd be great. But when we say we're doing an Italian fundraiser, the kids come out of the woodwork. We'll have twenty kids in the kitchen helping out, doing, you know, even kids that aren't going on the trip that want to go on the Paris trip, they'll be there because they, they're just want to help out their classmates to to make the money. They'll be doing dishes. They'll do whatever we need to do. So, yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. And, yeah, we try. We try to get them all here as often as we can.
Member Heard?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the field trip to France.
That motion seconded by Member Bowden. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again. Thanks for your time and all your work you put into. Thank you.
Thank you both for everything that you do. Agenda item number seven is to receive. Yes, to receive and potentially vote on the annual school committee officer election.
So I, I shared the, excuse me, the policy in the packet. I think each year, we're getting better and better at this. But at the first meeting in January each year, there is a process in which anyone can make a motion to nominate a chair, and you go through the process, just like there, if, as if there were a motion. So I guess I'd put it out there as that.
Member Eames?
I'd like to nominate Megan Parks as to to continue as chair.
Thank you. Is there a second? Member Bowden?
I'd like to make another nomination if I could, or do we stick with that for now?
We have to go through one motion.
Sure.
Yep. Member, uh, Herr, Councilor Harriman?
I'll second that motion, the motion by Member Eames.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? And opposed?
Motion passes by a vote of five to four.
Oh, I didn't know what she was doing. Do I have to do that right now, or?
I don't believe so. The chair has to be done this meeting, but
Okay, because, yeah, I haven't had a conversation about that, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we won't choose a vice chair today, since we haven't, it'll stay as is for now, since we haven't had to. Yes, don't look disappointed. All right, agenda item number eight is to review and potentially vote on Lewiston Regional Technical Center Cooperative Cost Sharing Agreement.
So this item is something we've discussed over the last couple of years, in which because we have this second satellite campus now for the technical center over in Auburn, we have incurred different costs, and we knew that over time, we would have to look at some kind of transition with how we figure out who pays what piece of that cost. And so what what you can do is you have a, excuse me, a cooperative cost-sharing agreement. And so we formulated with other districts, so this requires all six different districts to approve the cost sharing agreement proposal, which is essentially this. Anytime the cost for running LRTC exceeds the subsidy, the districts are going to divide up that responsibility in a prorated way based on an average of their kids over a two-year window. So it's really based on usage and access. This, this benefits, I think, all kids. It helps keeping programs afloat and and sharing that cost for programming for all kids because it's grown enough, but it has exceeded subsidy. So if if approved at this committee and five others, it would then go into place, and other school committees have this on their agenda as well the next week or two.
Member Bowden.
Thanks. Is this a cost that that Lewiston specifically has been incurring more than the other school districts?
Yes, as as a, as the host site, we have taken on more as part of the regional technical center being in our backyard or in our yard, not just our backyard, but also it affords us more seats for our kids in programs. And so with the second campus, it shifts some of those dynamics, but there's other things in play, including transportation, moving kids from here to there now, other things we've paid for prior. But yes, so over the last, since the center opened in Auburn last two years, this is now the second year, we have incurred costs here in Lewiston that is in excess of what other districts have contributed. I would say except for Lisbon this year, who was, because this conversation started last year, they were able to get it in their budget, and so.
Would sharing this cost remove any of, like, the extra seats that Lewiston gets, or would it stay the same as far as, like, the breakup of?
Yeah, so the seat breakdown remains the same.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Is each district's portion based on their seats? Is that how?
So, yeah, the portion would be based on not necessarily the the seats, because that's kind of delegated by the regionalization. That's part of the charter agreement as a regional technical center. But what happens is sometimes there's some some influx. So sometimes, say, give me an example. Auburn doesn't use all the seats in particular program, and Oak Hill will say, well, I have two kids that could fill those seats. And so they actually have a meeting where they talk about movement of those seats, and they just agree to it for the year if they have lack of interest versus additional interest. So there's some movement. So this prorated metric will use an average of the two-year usage, so that there's no big shock up or down, and is based on how many seats people actually use versus the seats that are actually allotted, so that people don't get penalized if they don't use a seat, if that makes sense.
And is Lewiston still paying the biggest portion of it?
We will, because we have the most seats.
And does, did some of that shift to Auburn now that Auburn has? Are Auburn and Lewiston paying the biggest portions, and then everyone else pays a smaller amount?
Yeah, it is, it is reflective of the size of the school and the amount of seats that they have available, yes.
Member Eames?
I'm just curious why all of the other four have the exact same number attached if things vary a little.
So it, there's only sixteen seats per year per program, and so when you break it down by school size, it it ends up with those number of seats. There's a regional agreement around that, and some of it was just the actuals is the average.
The two-year average.
That's the two-year average. So there's some movement in seats in that two-year average, even though they're very similar.
Exactly similar.
Member McGothlin?
Could you just remind us how much above state subsidy we usually put into this amount? Or actually, more than just us, what is the total amount that will now be shared across these districts?
So we won't have the total amount until we know what our subsidy is for next year, so that we depend on what we get in the in the ED two seventy-nine.
For last year, then.
Last year, I actually think that we were, it started as we were a low one hundred and ninety-two. I'm looking at Bill like he's going to just know that number off the top of his head, but I think, I think we're one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars below, and then we had an adjustment based on square footage that was missed in the state's assessment, so we actually got more subsidy. So in this particular school year, we actually were not negative in the subsidy category. And that's part of why this agreement's in place, because if there's a year that we're not in the negative, there'll be no additional cost each district. So in that case, this year, there wouldn't have been an additional cost.
Member Galant?
Is there a potential in the future that other school systems like Lisbon would have their own RLO type of LRTC? And is that a possibility?
So the way this, the structure is set up with regions, the word region is a big deal because that's what sets up the state subsidy and cost structure. So Lisbon could create their own programs if they wish, but they wouldn't get state subsidy to do them. So as part of the regionalization, all six schools in our area, they have access to that. The one caveat that I would mention is if the, if the state approved a program that was a larger that was a larger standout region, but offered programs that say LRTC couldn't offer. There could be language around it that students from a place like Lewiston or our six schools in our region, their kids would have access to place like, they've talked about this in Brunswick, if they did something at the Naval Air Station that was like STEM heavy or program heavy, but it was like really highly specialized that wouldn't be realistic for smaller regions like us and those around us. We're not small, but other places in Maine are not big enough to buy, you know, ten million dollars worth of high-end equipment. But if a state wants to invest in a particular way, they could do that. And then there may be language in that, our kids could go there. Um, that hasn't happened yet, but that's that's one caveat that I know that people have talked about. Uh, I know a few years back, um, some of you may remember, Auburn looked into buying, was it Whitehead Farm or Whiting Farm? Um, it was a light inquiry. It wasn't like necessarily even the school committee member. I think it was just a wondering of if we bought that, not we, but if Auburn bought that farm, could they run programming through it for their students? And the answer was, yeah, you absolutely can. But it's not an LRTC program and they would have to fund it on their own. So it became kind of not feasible.
Any other questions? You need a motion?
Yeah, we'd have to uh, have a motion and approval to move forward with the the region. And again, all other five areas have to approve this at this school board level for this to take effect.
Member Bowden?
I'll make the motion to approve this.
Seconded by member McGoughlin. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Yes.
Um, so I have a question. Um, just going back to agenda item number seven. So according to Robert's rules, um, all nominations should be put on the floor. So as the chair, you should ask for nominations, then all nomination people that should be nominated um, should be considered. Um, but it sounds like we were just only lo- only one nomination was on the table when we're nominating for officers. Any nomination should be put on the table to vote, so.
Our procedural rules spell out the steps and that's how we've done it for the last few years is per our procedural rules that we all voted on last January. And the procedural rules dictate that there's a motion on the table and that one gets voted on. And then it would, if that one fails, then it goes to the next motion. And that's in our procedural rules.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm saying is according to Robert's rules, which I think is like what we follow.
We default to Robert's rules if we don't have local precedent.
So what I'm saying is that my concern is that there was only one nomination put up. There could have been other nominations that another committee member would like to put forward, but none of the committee members were able to hear any other nominations because we only voted on that one nomination that was heard.
Right. And that's how we did it in the past where everybody would put out a nomination and then there would be a discussion and a vote. And then it was changed in procedural rules to to follow the way it is now.
So I don't feel comfortable only hearing one nomination for chair. I feel more comfortable if anybody else has a nomination that that could be heard. So I don't know if there is a way to table the chair for the nominations for officers until our next meeting until we can decide.
Charter dictates it has to be at this meeting. City charter says it has to be at the first meeting. Say that again.
All I could think would be to rescind and change the process, but it is the process we've used in the past, but.
Member Ames.
I have a question about um, the procedural rules we do it every January or is it every new set of people?
New, yeah, new set of.
New set of people, not January.
Right.
Okay. So I was gonna say we could.
We do the procedural rules every year? They're usually good for two years.
I meant procedural rules.
My mistake.
Yes, procedural rules are good for two years.
So then they have expired. Those procedural rules have expired.
They stay in place until it's voted on again.
So you have it.
Yep. Member. Member Bowden.
Now, I know to rescind a vote, it would have to be the folks that pass the vote through. Someone from that side of the vote would have to do it. Um, I don't see it happening, but I will agree with um, member Heard on this. And I think that, you know, the chair called on one person first, conveniently, someone that was nominating herself, and the vote went through. And you didn't even get to hear who I was going to nominate. And I do think a nomination process for a committee like this should involve everyone's nominations on the table and then a vote of who those people are.
And that's how we've done it in the past and then.
But I wasn't even able to say who I was gonna nominate.
I I understand that's that's the way the procedural rules are written. That's not, that's not on me. I didn't write the procedural rules. That's something that we all voted on and that's something that was written by the committee. So.
But if it's in Robert's rules, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do it that way.
Our our local rules, we we default to Robert's rules when the loc- when there is no local rule.
So last year, there were two different nominees on the table. When we voted, it was you and I.
Last year, that was something that we did outside of the committee because it was done at inauguration. So that was a different procedure.
No, we sat in Dingly in a regular meeting and both nominations are on the table and one was voted for and then the second one was voted for. That's exactly how it happened last year.
It was, that was the conversation for how we were going to do it in the script for the inauguration.
That the school committee did, whether it was.
Could someone send me the rules so I could read them through?
If you go into your Google Drive and Google procedural rules, it'll come up. And that's not how we used to do it. We used to do it where everybody laid out nominations and then there was a discussion and then the committee changed that. And so that is what's in procedural rules now.
Um, I haven't been reconciled.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I mean, it just it just doesn't feel good. It just doesn't, it doesn't feel democratic. It doesn't feel like, you know, if if there's one person being nominated and they get voted in right away, I mean, where's where's the, you know, where's the fairness? Where's the where's the um, ability to to do something different? I I don't know. I just, I I I had a hard time composing myself, um, being cut off like that, that that we were just voting in one person and there was no opportunity to have any other person nominated. I mean, that doesn't even sound American to me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Member Bowden?
Would somebody who voted yes like to rescind uh, the vote to make this fair for everyone on the board?
It would be there Elizabeth or Scott since they made the motion and seconded it.
No, of course not.
Member, member McGoughlin.
Just another suggestion would be if at the next meeting, it sounds like we need to adopt new set of procedural rules.
Guessing the workshop or?
So procedural rules are going to be changed at any point in time. They have a one-year life, I guess, and they stay in place until they're changed. If that makes sense. So they don't have to be changed. They can be.
Is it the normal course of business that the committee each year adopts or revotes on on the set of rules?
We don't always do it every year.
No, not every year.
No.
If there's changes.
Alright, that's that's what I was asking. Part of my point is I I mean, I think we should get through this meeting is my personal feeling. And just conduct the business that we have and, you know, we have some folks waiting presumably for uh, later agenda items. That's my personal feeling, but I think, you know, if we just want to formalize rules next time, that would be my my preference.
And we have previous copies of procedural rules where it did, where where it was written the way others are saying. Um, and so we have examples of the different ways we've done it over time, um, that we can look through and and figure out what works. The procedural rules that are we have right now spell out these steps. Member Bowden.
Oh, I just want to say procedurally, we haven't been following rules the way that we should be because two cycles ago, you decided to step down and said, I want Bruce to be in my place. And there wasn't even a vote. And so then Bruce. Nope, there wasn't. I specifically remember there actually was not a vote and we all just accepted it. Okay.
Oh, oh, because he was vice chair and it was written in procedural rules that the chair steps down and the vice chair steps in.
What I'm saying is it just seems to be every single year, it's always something. And this year was interesting because raised my hand as well, but you conveniently called on Elizabeth first instead of calling on me. So it's fine. Yeah, but still, there's there's still another name I would like to put out there. And I think that you just did the entire committee a disservice as well as the public.
Well, it's not me. It's our procedural rules. So you can continue to say it's me, but I'm just following our procedural.
No, it was, it was you.
Okay, that's your perspective. Member Heard.
Thank you. So, yes, I I can a hundred percent assure you that I I I will not nominate myself. I will not nominate member Bowden if that's the concern or for the committee, I can tell you that's not happening, but I do think it's a disservice and it's an icky feeling that other members of this committee's voice is being silenced and are not being afforded the chance to nominate another member of this committee because supposedly our rules haven't expired yet. Well, then we should procedurally have our meeting about our procedural rules before we even vote in our officers because then this stuff happens. So, I think we should rescind our vote and we should look at our rules, edit or update, and then we can vote in who our officers are gonna be. I, it's only, it's only right. And I don't, I'm not saying that because it's you. I'm saying in general, I don't think it's okay. I don't. If it was just Phoenix that got nominated or Elizabeth, I don't care. I'm just saying everybody's voice needs to be heard. And by silencing other members of the committee, it's icky and it's gross.
Every member had a voice per procedural rules in their vote for or against. Nobody's being silenced. It's it's the procedural rules. It's not on me. I didn't make a decision. I didn't write the procedural rules. Every single person sitting at this table except for our newest member voted on these rules last year and didn't have a problem with it until this moment. So you can, you can say that it's me doing something wrong, but it, I am following our procedural rules. And that's, that's it. That's the fact.
I'm not saying it's you. I'm saying what's currently happening right now at this meeting is icky. Us not listening to the will of the committee is not okay. That's the whole point of having a committee. That's the whole point of us each having our own voice.
Right, and everybody got a vote.
Without hearing any other options. That's what I'm saying. All the options weren't put on the table.
Uh, agenda item number nine is to review and potentially vote on the first read of the following policy, BBAB, school committee self-evaluation.
So, I'm sorry. Okay, so um, this is a new um, policy. This would this would replace um, the policy that um, is on is on the next agenda item, which is BAA. And the the biggest difference is it's less specific and it's more general. It allows for um, a evaluation to be used that has those components or those things that were uh, that are laid out in um, BBAB uh, versus the the current, the current um, policy which we're looking to to delete. And the I'll just share this now because it's the next agenda item. The the evaluation itself, the form, it doesn't need to be in our policy manual. That's why it's on the agenda to be deleted. So that's the next agenda item, but I'm putting that out now so that you know if you're voting on the first read of this one, why that's happening.
Is there a motion? Member McGoughlin?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the policy, uh, BBAB.
And a second? Seconded by member Counselor Herrman. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Per Robert's rules, there's rules abstaining. It has to be a reason to abstain like a conflict of interest, not just abstaining to try to make a statement. Okay. Did you get all the votes? Uh, member Glenn heard and Bowden abstained. And Sharptier was opposed. Agenda item number ten is to review and potentially vote on the deletion of the following policies, BAA and BAA dash R.
So as I said, the BAA is, would be deleted because we are looking to add BBAB. And BAA dash R is the actual evaluation form, which doesn't need to be in the policy manual.
Any further, any discussion questions? Is there a motion? Member Ames? Is there a second?
Make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by member Osman. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five. Agenda item number eleven is to receive the Lewiston Public Schools Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement.
So I have copies of this, uh, but this was brought up by the committee over time. So um, what I have here, if you wouldn't mind passing them down. Is a copy of the school committee member conflict of interest policy, which is something that has lived in our policy manual for some time. And the very last page is a um, conflict of interest disclosure statement. I'm sorry. And um,
Last page is what we fill out though.
And and so just wanted to provide this to you to see if anyone on the committee had any questions. Um, to see if if this is something that makes sense for people to use. Um, I just wanted to include it in in process at the start of the year, if that makes sense to everyone. It's not something I need back in the moment. Um, I just it it was brought up by the committee as just so we can be aware. And I had some examples. Um, everybody here knows that um, my wife works in the district. I had to follow policy to um, bring that to all of you uh, in a public session that has been a- approved as a conflict of interest, at least for me. Uh, under our nepotism policy. Another one, uh, I sit on the United Way Board. So if the committee were taking action that directly impacted United Way or their processes or benefited them. Um, I need to be very mindful of of what my role is to pretend while I don't get a vote. I have to be very careful with that. Um, so those kinds of things, um, you know, if you sit on a board or if you have family members that might benefit from certain decisions, things of that nature. I remember uh, member Damon, even though he ran a mechanical company and could have done certain things in some of our projects, but because he sat on the committee or was within a year of him being on the committee, he was actually by policy not allowed to. Uh, his company was not allowed to um, do work for 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 funds uh, in that context. Um, so those kinds of things, just to make them known. So if you could take some time to read through that. And if you have questions, feel free to reach out. And we'll go from there.
Counselor Herrman?
Thank you. Um, are there any changes from previous years or is this the same policy as before?
So the policy is exactly the same, but what we've never done is actually say what things might exist for people, um, so that so that we would have surprises. Um, or people would say, I don't want to vote on this because I have this affiliation and then it created confusion. So to try to avoid that, the idea was brought up to use the form.
Any other questions? Agenda item number twelve is report from the school committee chair. I do not have anything to report on tonight. Agenda item number thirteen is report from the superintendent.
I I have some things to share, um, i- including a big pause for me in what just happened in process. And so I will look at all of the language that exists to see, um, and and ensure that we're doing things correctly. Um, and I'm not here to to pick a side. Uh, these are my nine bosses, but I want to make sure that we're doing things as well as we can for our community. Um, I think I hear both lenses of things that we follow the procedure that we've used for uh, multiple years, but also that uh, there's room to make sure that we have voice, uh, and and people are aware. So, um, I'm hopeful that we can repair um, this piece and and get back together. This is, this is a good team, I think. That does a lot of good work for kids. Um, that was very unscripted. I apologize. Um, other updates, um, our January twenty-seventh meeting has been moved to the twenty-eighth for the joint meeting with the city council. Um, that is a a a time when we gather and and talk about interests, uh, both in the city and the the school committee. Um, and then I'm also looking to see what members might be available on the thirteenth for some new hearings that we need to have in executive session, uh, but I can touch base with you after. All for now.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number fourteen is report from our city council rep.
Thank you. Um, the city council has a meeting tomorrow and um, it's a lot of beginning of the year housekeeping items, uh, such as um, just all the the things that we authorize the clerk to do on behalf of the elected officers, um, things like that. We have, um, we also have several recommendations. We have, um, we also have several recommendations from the planning board regarding the, uh, the homeless shelter zoning. And, uh, and land use pieces of, of those rules. So we'll be voting on those as well. And, um. And then we have a, a couple of workshops, one on the capital improvement plan. And I think that's all I've got for right now.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number fifteen is any update from subcommittees? I don't know that anyone's met because of the holiday. Uh, member Eames?
Well, just, um, the self-evaluation is part of the policy subcommittee purview. And hopefully everyone has already done it. Ironically, we just voted on it. And also ironically, we just had a, a kerfuffle. Um, but we need to end up talking about that at a public session soon. So please, everybody fill it out, not, not you, but everybody else fill out the, uh, self-evaluation form that's been circulated. I think maybe Karen, you know, how, how many people have done it and not done it?
Yes, I, uh, reached out to a few folks, um, today who, um, needed some additional information. And I think we're, we're well on our way. So we should be able to have that discussion soon.
Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, our school committee community announcements. Nope. Uh, agenda item number seventeen, future agenda items. Member McGoughlin.
Well, I was just gonna say that, um. Given that our next meeting is the joint meeting with the city council. I wonder if it's worth us considering trying to arrange a special meeting to address the procedural rules. At the very least. Um, cause I think we need to be a functioning member of nine by the next regular meeting. So I think we should try to get that done.
I'm just curious with the members here, on the thirteenth, we do have a, uh. A hearing that no needs to take place, um. And, uh, whether I can schedule something before or after, but I wonder if there shouldn't be some regular business on that, but I think.
Could it be then?
We're gonna schedule an unscheduled business meeting. I would want the committee's feedback on.
We've never done procedural rules at a business meeting. We usually do it at our workshops. It's something that we workshop. So it doesn't have to be a public meeting. It's something that we've always done at workshop. And then we just kinda discuss it among the committee.
So it could be.
And then it's voted on at a public meeting, but it's.
Be related to whatever we do on the thirteenth. It could be.
We could explore a retreat function too.
Yeah.
Workshops though.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
I'll reach out.
Um, and our former member, uh, former Ward five member reached out to me, um, regarding the parking situation at Lewiston High School. And suggested that we have some kind of an agenda item about that because there was a day that her daughter came to school and there was no parking spaces. So she went back home, um, and that apparently there's, um, some parking difficulties going on at the high school. And so she asked that I bring that up tonight. I don't know much about it, but. Any other future agenda items? Yes.
So I would like to add, um, um. Following up on previous public input made by Jama Mohammed. Um, I would like to include on our agenda item, um, next meeting. To have, um, subcommittee, uh, multicultural subcommittee, um, established. And I would like to include that on our agenda item.
Thank you. Any other?
It's like my, Mike was on, sorry. Go ahead. And when we do that, we should consider the com- composition to be from town staff administration. And this committee, I think that seems like a useful piece of that.
Sub, subcommittees of the school committee do have a couple of steps to typically to be approved. Uh, so we can have that be a discussion coming up.
I think it's worth having the discussion to see if it can be part of the, um, discipline and behavioral commi, uh, ad hoc committee that we just created also. And that might be, they might serve the same function, depending on the makeup. Um, agenda item number eighteen, to enter into executive session to conduct student A disciplinary hearing title twenty A one zero zero one nine and title one four oh five six B. Is there a motion? Moved by Member McGoughlin, seconded by Member Eames. All in favor?